Counselor Perry.
Present.
Counselor Hilton.
Present.
Counselor DiMedeiras.
Present.
Counselor Katz.
Present.
Counselor Coulter.
Present.
Counselor Cook.
Present.
Counselor Driggs.
Present.
All present.
Everybody is here, welcome again. It is Monday, July 8th, 2019. I'll say again, a beautiful Monday night. Outside, we will start with the consent agenda. We have, as usual, town council minutes, June 24th, 2019. June 10th, both regular and closed sessions. Counselor DiMedeiras will abstain. May 28th, these are all 2019, by the way, regular meeting. We acknowledge your seat of minutes from the boards, commissions, and committees, three sets from the planning board, and other reports. We have our town administrator, police and fire department overtime report, and the May monthly department report. We have the planning board administrative officer, Ms. Susan Gill, activities report from June 2019. We have approval of tax assessor abatements, it's a routine matter. A public hearing for proposed amendment to Chapter 6, Article 3, Section 6-51 of the Code of Ordinances, that's a one-day Class F and F1 liquor license, rescheduled to July 22nd, 2019. That was Section 6-51 of the ordinances, that is rescheduled to July 22nd, which is two weeks from tonight?
Yeah.
Two weeks from tonight. And a public hearing on another amendment, there'll be a lot of these coming to the Code of Ordinances. This is Article 12, Section 8, 10, or otherwise, in order to increase the number and time permitted for the display of special event signs for charitable purposes. That is now scheduled for August 12th, 2019. That is your consent agenda. Any items to be removed for further consideration? Hearing none. May I have a motion to approve, as presented.
Moved.
Second.
And all those in favor? Great, thank you very much. We have three matters set aside for public presentations, announcements, and comments. The first, we'll get right into it, is our request for input on potential litigation relative to sports betting. I will attempt to summarize this briefly, then I'll kick it over to our solicitor, and then we'll go more open. So, put briefly, there is a litigation matter pending in the Rhode Island Superior Court, which raises this question of whether the sports betting component of the casino was approved by a vote of, it's not just Tiverton, it's statewide, I guess.
Two votes.
Two votes, both Tiverton specifically and statewide, just like we took that vote, it was a very close vote, for the casino operations. We were not involved in that suit, but the judge that's presiding over that case on his own decided that we were an indispensable party, and so we were dragged into that case. And so what we need to make a decision on is whether we want to take any position at all. We don't have to take a position, by the way. We could take a position that we agree with the plaintiffs in that case, that there should have been a vote, or we could disagree that there should, that either you don't need a vote, or that perhaps the vote that was taken was sufficient, or we could take what I think might be our default position, unless we persuade it otherwise, which is to take no position at all, and attend the hearings as we are required to do by the judge. And there's a secondary question to this as well, is if we decide to take a position at all, there's this other question of what type of town resources would we want to expend, if any, advocating or defending that position. So that's my attempt to key it up. Mr. Solicitor, do you want to expand on it from there?
Mr. President, moving too quickly. I'm going to recuse for this, I'm still waiting to hear back from the other commission, FS commission.
Okay, sure thing. You can still speak from the floor, though, of course. Okay. Fill in anything I got wrong, fill in on the gaps, please, thank you.
Sure, I think that was the gist of it. I just circulated a very brief memo that provides essentially the outline that you just provided with some of the references and details for your benefit. What I did in the memo was just sort of break it down, and really to point out that there's two issues. The main issue is the one that you just articulated, that there is a question as to whether the original vote for the casinos also included authorization for sports betting, or whether that is a separate vote, or a separate matter that should have been identified in the first vote. I've now reviewed the papers that were filed by the parties in the case, at least up to this date. I think there are compelling arguments on both sides of that, but I also, and I also spoke with your former solicitor, and Lincoln's current solicitor, Tony DeSisto. He and I had some good conversations about some of the history and Lincoln's position on this same matter. But it comes down to really two questions. One is whether towns like Tiverton and Lincoln have a right to have a voice in questions like this, so whether there's standing to be in front of a judge if the town had a particular position. And so the judge has asked really for the parties to weigh in on two fronts. One is the standing question, and whether, you know, as voters, as people that go to the casino, as people that just have an interest in the public questions of import before the state of Rhode Island, whether there should be a voice for taxpayers and citizens and, you know, voters in towns like Tiverton. And then the second question is the merits question, the one that you just raised, whether, in fact, the vote that happened the first time covered sports betting. And so what I've done in the memo is just outlined very briefly on, you know, front and back of one sheet of paper here, that there are those two questions. You have the right to agree in varying ways on either of those questions, I think, and I think Tony DeSisto agrees, and I don't know what Lincoln's going to do, I don't want to speak for them, but I think that there is a sense that perhaps the quickest way and the most efficient way to get this behind us, so that you can have a predictable stream of revenue from your sports betting, which you have today, is to agree that there is standing, agree that this question should be answered by the judge, but that it should be answered as quickly and efficiently as possible. And so weigh in for the judge on that point, simply saying, yes, we believe you should make a decision. But then our further recommendation is, for two reasons, is to not weigh in on the merits of the case. And of course, your direction, you know, could be otherwise, but I'm offering my recommendation that I think is probably in the best interest of the town. First of all, it would be incredibly expensive for you to weigh in in any substantive way. I think at the last meeting, we heard that there were hundreds of pages of briefing already, and we haven't even been at the beginning of this. You know, we're just at the end of the beginning, we're not even at the, you know, middle yet. So to pay counsel to weigh in in a substantive way would quickly get to the tens of thousands of dollars. That may be of interest to the town for other reasons, but even if that was of interest to the town, I would also suggest that no matter what we did, it would just be echoing what's going to be done by one party or the other that's already spending tens of thousands of dollars and coming up with the opposing sides. So if down the road you decided, well, we have a compelling reason to support one or the other, that's fine. If we did that, I would say we just sort of say, we agree with X or we agree with Y. I wouldn't necessarily think it's in the town's interest to pay us to recreate that wheel. So, in summary, number four on the back of the memo, our recommendation in our course of action, unless directed otherwise, will be to simply say that, yes, we believe the town has the right to weigh in here, but we do not intend to weigh in in any substantive way.
Okay, thank you, that was very helpful. So, I think the default position is that we are going to show up to court, because we've been ordered to show up to court, but we're going to stay neutral, other than to say we agree that the matter should be decided by the judge. And there are some competing interests here. Of course, the casino is a tenant in our town, and obviously a source of revenue for us, and of course, there's issues at stake with, you know, voting rights. So, I'd just like to open it up to see if anybody else, if anybody would like to comment or any questions. I don't know that we need to make a final decision. Your deadline is in about two weeks for a brief, if any, is that right?
We, I should have mentioned this. We have a deadline of, I believe, the 28th for a response, but we have also, in conjunction with Attorney DeSisto and the town of Lincoln, requested, informally requested, and maybe we'll have a hearing, I'm not sure, that the court give us a little extra time, because when the response briefs are submitted by the casinos, we don't know necessarily at that point which one we would agree with. If you directed me to agree with one side or the other on the merits of this, we wouldn't have had a chance to read their substantive briefs. So we asked the judge to give the towns an additional week or two to actually read what the parties have provided, so that we can decide what we want to do. So, I don't know for sure if there, if tonight you direct me to try to weigh in on the merits of this. Right now, that deadline is, I think, the 28th, but we're hopeful that we would have a bit of a window after that.
Okay, the floor is open. Would anybody like to be heard on this? Any questions or comments on this fairly novel litigation question? Any questions or comments? Oh, yes.
Do you have a list of the plaintiffs in this case, the full list of plaintiffs? Is it more than just tariff?
I don't, I don't have the copy of the filings in front of me. I believe it's just tariff, but I don't know that for sure.
And has Lincoln taken a position yet?
The only position I'm aware that Lincoln has taken is to decide, as I believe you indicated at the last meeting, to not take the financial support and legal support of the casinos to cover the representation. They thought that would be a conflict of interest, and so they decided that their, the last meeting that I'm aware of, there may have been one since, but the last meeting I was aware, they decided not to have the casinos represent their interests.
Obvious.
Okay, second call. Any questions or comments from anybody else? Okay, Mr. Bennett?
Yes, I believe, to me, the status is very clear, and that is that the status is ambiguous in its clarity. If it were very clear that the ballot question included sports betting, then on the ballot, it would have said, betting including sports betting. Therefore, that side cannot prevail because it didn't say that. In order for people to say, well, it's clear that it didn't include it, then the ballot question would have to have said that this does not include sports betting. So it's very clear that the clarity of which side must prevail does not exist. It's ambiguous. Thank you.
That was Mr. Roger Bennett for the record.
So, if anybody disagrees, my sense here is that you have a working consensus to follow your recommendation. If any counselor would like to see a formal vote on this, then we'll put it back on the agenda for the 22nd. Otherwise, I think you have your guidance, is that fair?
Timing works.
Okay, well with that, we shall continue on. Thank you very much. So the next matter is a public presentation by Mr. Chris Whitman, who's the chief executive officer of Solomon Energy, sponsored by Mr. Ray Fugere of Tiverton. If you'd like to come on up, feel free to have a seat here. Solomon Energy, this is regarding a proposal, potential proposal to lease land in the industrial park, or perhaps even the landfill for a solar project. I don't know that there's a formal protocol, but my rough understanding is that when we've had ideas for perhaps selling a parcel at the industrial park, we usually do some kind of a 15, 20-minute, just sort of presentation heads up. This isn't meant to be a, we're not going to grill you or debate, it's certainly not going to come up for a decision, I imagine that would be quite some time. And you're probably already aware of this, but we also are in a little bit of, we had a solar ordinance, we don't have a solar ordinance now, we're working on a solar ordinance, I know that's potentially quite relevant to this. But I'd like to thank you for taking the time and presenting to us, and Mr. Fugere for sponsoring, and turn the floor to you. Try to keep it at 15, if that's okay.
No, we'll, we'll keep it short. Is it, is this, yeah.
I think the sound is better. I don't know, does any, can you hear us a little better than normal tonight? Yeah, okay, great, thank you.
Okay, without any further ado, this is Mr. Whitman.
Okay. As you probably know, because you have a solar ordinance, solar has become a popular and can be lucrative approach for municipalities. And at Solomon Energy, I work for probably about 20 towns in Connecticut, about another 20 towns in New York, and then I also do some work in Massachusetts and Rhode Island, but not as much. Ray introduced me to the idea that you have the industrial park, which I know was for sale about five or six years ago, and no bids came in for it. But my thought on this was, well, geez, is this a possible space for a larger-scale solar facility that could generate some revenue for the town? And we did some initial analysis on the site and said, yes. And while it would require a lot of clearing of trees at the site, it is also next to a power plant. And one of the major factors in solar development is how close you are to interconnection, where you can interconnect with the electricity grid. Obviously, with a power plant right there, you have great interconnection aspects to it. Now, the real question is, what kind of revenues can you generate from just leasing the site, which would probably be for either a 20- or 25-year basis, from the site? And we took a look at this, and we talked to some of the folks that we deal with who are developing projects in Rhode Island. And we think there is the possibility of generating somewhere between $300,000 and $500,000 annually for leasing that site for the development of a solar project. We are doing this for a lot of other towns who are looking at landfills or open spaces, because most towns in the Northeast especially are facing budget crises, or have a lot more things that they'd like to do with revenues than they otherwise have available. And this could be a way of, you know, potentially cutting property taxes, or it could be a way of increasing services for the town. But what we do is, we would come in, and we would do an analysis of the property. We typically run request for proposals then, based upon our findings, so that we comply with all city ordinances, our town ordinances regarding, you know, basically competitive interests. And my company does this all for free, until you've made the decision you want to go forward with the project, you sign up a developer, and then the town still doesn't pay me, I have the developer pay me. And you ask me why I have the developer pay me? Because the developer rolls my costs into the project, and gets investment tax credit from the federal government of 30%, and then another 15% of depreciation benefits in connection with the fees. We would love to be able to do this for you, if you're interested in this. Obviously, $300,000 to $500,000 a year is a substantial sum of money for 20 years. The town would not make any investments, there's no money that would be necessary, other than I potentially could be talking with the town administrator and the town solicitor about this. And obviously, the solar ordinance is very important. We just went through this for a town in New York outside of Albany. They had a solar ordinance, and they had to amend it because they wanted to do their landfill, and so they amended it so the town was not part of the, or that specific property was not part of it. Now, there may be other ways that we can look. I don't know whether you've looked at signing up solar supplies for town buildings or schools. There's savings that can be involved in for those things. We take a much more holistic approach, looking at municipalities in ways that we can both get the ancillary benefits of being green, but also save money in either electricity costs, or generate revenue through lease revenues or things along those lines. And hopefully, that's short enough, and I can answer any questions that people are interested in, or I could get into a lot more detail.
Can I ask, did you want to go?
Go ahead, Donna.
Okay. I was interested in, it looks like you can use several programs at once.
That's correct.
Feed-in tariff program, and the virtual net metering program.
Right.
Can you do three?
I think we could probably do all three, because there are different plats and different sites. So you generally are limited to one per plat of land. I have not done the research in depth here, but yes, I think you could do all three. Now, the difference between the three, and the reason the revenues vary between the three, is the feed-in tariff program has one price that the utilities will give you for the power generated there. The virtual net metering program is slightly different, and the utility scale is obviously much lower, because you're selling directly at a much lower price to the utility directly. So that's why the revenues vary so tremendously between the three programs.
Are they limited by size?
Yes, they are limited by size.
It's in the package. If I can ask one more question?
Sure.
I'm just, the areas that are recommended for this type of solar energy are the exact places that Ray has brought before us, which is supposed to be either industrial park, or buildings, or the trash site. How long does it take to use the landfill? Does it have to settle before you can use that?
Absolutely.
And how long does it take for that?
Quite a while.
Five years.
The landfill at this point, from my perspective, if it's going to be capped next year, is probably at least 10 years away, because what they do on landfills for solar facilities is they build, first you cap it, and you've got a layer of normally clay or something on the top. You can't penetrate caps. That kind of defeats the purpose of the cap. So you have to basically put a system on top of it, and then they call what, put ballast on it. And ballast is basically cement blocks to weigh it down. The problem is, is landfills settle unevenly. As the trash compacts, gas, methane gas and other stuff is released, it settles. So you have two issues. One, as it settles, the racking systems become uneven, can cause breaks in the panels. The second reason is, is keep in mind, this is, these solar panels produce electrical production. So you always have the risk early on, if there's methane being released from the landfill, methane and electricity don't go to all too.
They're going to have fireworks.
Explosion.
Fireworks.
Fire.
Yeah, exactly, and you just don't want.
All right, so that's pretty much.
10 years out for the landfill, yes.
Talked about that.
Solid legend, the industrial park, that I don't think is going to sell.
Yeah, that's my question. What lot were you looking at to?
We looked at all the lots. We took just a picture of the entire industrial park. Now, obviously, this could be built out in sections. You could determine that certain sections are.
Well, there's some prime sections that we could still self-business, but we've had two, so at least two solar companies, right, come in here. I don't know if you even.
I guess one way before my.
Yeah, and we have told them that we'd rather them put it on unusable for other projects. But they did a complete analysis of the whole park, and said it wasn't suitable for solar. So, I didn't know if you actually did any studies.
I just walked around, I walked around this.
Because there was a lot of ledge, a lot of, there was many reasons, it was a long time ago. But two companies have gone out, looked, and never came back to us, or said, no, we're not interested. The planning department actually wouldn't know which sites they looked at, and what they were doing with them, but this isn't the first time. And the industrial park was a little iffy for this. So I wasn't sure if you did any analysis at all on the property.
I walked around the property. You clearly have wetlands on the property, and the wetlands, obviously, were, you can't go anywhere near.
Right.
Obviously, there's clearing work that will have to be done with the trees, there's no doubt about that. But the land seems pretty flat. Depending on how much the clearing costs, there are various factors in the rentals. And a lot of it has to do with the cost of construction of the facility, and the cost of interconnection. Those are the two main cost factors in this. The cost of construction has dropped dramatically, depending on how many years ago you've done this.
A few, they were not in the council, but you were there for one of them, weren't you?
Yeah, I just have to correct on that last one. It's not as if they didn't come back. They made a proposal, and the proposal was declined.
Well, then I'm thinking of the last one, they didn't come, that's right, the proposal at the time, they wanted the better property, though, correct?
No, they thought they could do it.
Okay.
My question would be, what is the minimal acreage you need for the smallest solar park you would want to do? Is there a minimum? Because I see here 150 acres on one of these, and I'm like.
To be honest, I would like to make this worthwhile for you, and for the town, and for rents, and everything else. I'd like to have at least 25 acres. But I don't need 150 acres.
Okay.
And that way, we could, you know, obviously, put it into the feed-in tariff program, which is the most lucrative of the three. And that would be, that would be something we could do. And if you really like it, or you find you don't have any other, any use for the rest of the land, we could obviously expand off of it in the future. Clearly, all of this is also depending on getting in these programs. And that, getting into the program is an absolute key, because without the programs, getting in those programs, the solar developers won't be interested in it.
Do you have any thoughts on, I don't know if it's possible to quantify, but just trying to be mindful of what having a solar array might do to the value of other businesses. And I'm not expressing a position on this one way or another, but is that a factor that you've seen in your work? I mean, if I had, say, a hotel, and right next to it was a shimmering, you know, how would we begin to think about?
Bottom line on this one is, we're, you're pretty isolated up there. There don't appear to be many businesses, other than the two large businesses that are up there, including the power plant. Let's face it, the power plant's a heck of a much bigger eyesore up there than a solar facility would be up there. But if you're asking me, if you put it on an open field next to a resort hotel, would it be considered something that people would be offended by? Yeah, they would.
Yeah.
You know, I assume.
I was actually going to ask on the power plant, too. We're in the middle of doing, I think, a reassessment, or working on negotiating a reassessment. This might be a very stupid question, but is there any reason to think that we would be harming the value of the power plant by putting an energy production source, that somebody would have to pay for that interconnection?
Right, the interconnection would be paid by the developer. And that interconnection would, obviously, there are massive power lines up there. That's one of the big benefits of the site, is the fact you are so close to that. You put these things, you need a minimum of what's called three-phase line, to put solar in, of any size at all. All residential customers are generally serviced by single-phase lines. So, up there, you have multiple three-phases, and more than that up there, because that's, you know, when that plant is producing power, it's producing a lot of power, and it's kicking a lot of power out. So there, the lines up there have to be very robust.
So, may I ask a question?
Sure.
So, I'm just, I'm looking at these revenue estimates, and these are based on 105 acres total, correct?
Well, there's three different revenue estimates in here. You will see one that's the 5-megawatt feed-in tariff, I believe. You'll see one that's the 14-megawatt VNM, and then you'll see the 30-megawatt utility scale.
I'm just looking at the page before that, to add up to the potential half a million dollars in revenue, and that says 105 acres total.
Right, so that would.
So, my question is then, the projections on the following pages are based on how many acres?
Right. So if you look at the solar revenue projections, which is page three of the 16-pager.
Oh, there we go, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Okay.
So, you'll notice that the first one is for the feed-in tariff program. So that would be box one on the front page.
Yep.
That's the 25 acres. And that shows, obviously, the revenues on an average annual basis of about $239,000, starting at 175-year-one, and then escalating at 2.5% thereafter.
And then, I see, so the, the.
The second one's the VNM.
Virtual net metering would be on 70, based on, these estimates are on 70 acres, and the utility scale is 150 acres, okay.
Any questions or comments from the public? More in the line of questions, I would say, very, very introductory.
Preliminary.
Well, what, are we, we're up, is there, is the potential of the tax credits that make this attractive to the developers will expire at the end of the calendar, or is that our fear, if we? that our fear, if we?
They, they are dropping, and they will drop starting next year. They don't drop significantly for three or four years. This is not something that you have to make an immediate decision on, and feel like that if I don't do this now, I'm not gonna be able to do this. I'm not, not gonna put that kind of pressure on you, because it's not legitimate. Obviously, we need to time this in a manner so that, you know, basically, what, what typically occurs on this is you will enter into an option, you will do an RFP, you will pick a winner, you will enter in a lease option agreement with the parties, they will then apply into the Rhode Island solar programs. If they obtain it, you go to a lease, a final lease, and then they start to build the project, is how it works. How long does this take? This is not a six-month thing. This is two years, probably, three years, from starting until the project is complete and in commercial operation.
Question.
Just, just came up with the bidding process. We were in our prep call, talking about whether we would need to go to bid even to retain your services, as I'm not quite sure what the title would be, project manager, or triage artist, or I'm not quite sure what.
So, a little bit of both.
Is that still something we need to get a tight answer on?
Well, the question is, is if you're not paying me, I don't know necessarily whether, most towns have taken the position that if they're not paying me, they don't need to go to a request for proposal for my services. Now, obviously, we then would go out with an RFP that we draft on behalf of the town to various developers who may have interest in leasing the property. And that, obviously, would be an RFP, and that would comply with all of your procurement requirements on that front.
Excuse me.
Yeah, I'm not, no, 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 I, I thought about it only, only briefly, and Jan and I have talked, I know Jan is interested in this question, too. So I, I'm not sure, because I try to liken it to, you know, the fact that much of your land use and zoning legal bill is paid for by user fees that the town collects in order to offset my costs. So you don't pay for solicitor services for land use and zoning to the extent that you get fees in that cover those, right?
Right.
But you still have to go out to bid, you know, or, or for, for most contracts, you would still have to go out to bid, despite the fact that there's a user fee that covers it. I think in this case, because there is some value, whether it's paid on one side of the ledger or the other, I'm not sure makes the difference. I'd be really curious to see how other states, other towns, have treated this. I, I, it's certainly not a settled question in my mind, and I would be uncomfortable with the idea that you could just simply pick somebody. Now, not to say that you couldn't just agree that, that if somebody went out, you know, you could just say that we are welcome to have third-party brokers go out and, and develop RFPs, and we will, you know, entertain them. And then it's up to them to, to, you know, on a non-exclusive basis, bring in the best options for, for the town. But I'm not sure if that's the kind of position that, that the gentleman would be willing to, to take. And I think if it's not that, then you have to look at, at whether you have to take a first-step bid.
Ultimately, I think the way most towns have dealt with this is they say, if we're expending money, then we have to do an RFP.
Yeah, but we're paying, I don't know.
Yeah, I, I think the question is, you know, you can expend money in a lot of different ways, you know, and money is a fungible resource.
Bottom line is, if the project does not go forward, the project will only go forward after an RFP has been issued with third parties involved.
I understand, but if the town does enter into a contract, then it will have expended money in the form of a higher cost for that solar project.
Right.
Because that developer's paying you.
Well, that's an open question, so.
So.
On this point?
A, a little bit on this point. So, so, oh, sorry, do you?
It's okay, good.
So essentially, there, this is some combination of consulting services, but basically, a process where, as opposed to us preparing an RFP and dealing directly with a solar developer, you're doing that. So you're in, that, that's, that's your, that's your value add, right?
It's consulting services. What we do is we do initial evaluations of property. We contact utility to see on interconnection, the issues that may or may not develop there. And so before we would ever issue an RFP, we put all the due diligence in that's necessary for us to feel comfortable that this is a viable project, and, and go out. We also, obviously, will be working with the utilities. We typically work with the towns in the negotiation on the lease options and the leases. I, I am an attorney by trade, but I'm not an, I'm not an attorney, and I haven't been in a law firm or done legal work for 20 years, but I, I was a New York City law firm attorney, be it good or bad.
We lived a tell.
And lived a tell. We did that for about 10 years, so.
So.
It's a combination of engineering, legal, and other things that we are involved in, and financial, for that matter.
So, I'm sorry, that was my question, but I wasn't quite finished, if that's okay. So I just wanted to make sure I understand what your services are. And it may be that some communities even tivered and decide that that's a road that they want to go down. But again, somebody is footing the bill for your services, whether we're doing it, or as Mr. Chichioni said, the develop, that the, the developer is doing it, which may or may not affect the amount of revenue that we could receive. So, and, and I also am aware that there are a number of solar projects in Rhode Island, including significant ones, where municipalities or entities are working directly with the solar developer, especially given Rhode Island's favorable environment for all of this right now. So I would be, A, very curious as to the final determination on whether or not a service like this required an RFP. And secondly, I would be very curious, not that your service doesn't have a value, obviously it does, but potentially, what the difference to us would be if we were to use a service like this versus whether or not we ourselves went directly to RFP with a solar developer, which a number of municipalities and even, you know, property owners have done, and what the revenue, ultimate revenue difference for us would be in the end.
I think if I could, Council Hilton asked the question just right. I think it's, it's, there's two parts to the RFP question. One is, is it a legal requirement? And I would suspect in Rhode Island, just given some history and case law, that I think there's probably a way around it. But if you went around it, what's the cost, right? And I think that's the harder part. If you don't go out to bid, then how do you know? Is it, you know, I wouldn't even know how you necessarily bid it, I think that would be a separate conversation. But is it, that brokerage fee is one component, and then the quality of the person is another component. But let's focus on the broker's, broker's fee for a second. If you go out to bid and say, you get a response that we're gonna add 4% to the contract cost to cover our, all the things that were just laid out, and somebody else says, I'll add 3.5%, then you know that answer. Otherwise, there is no way, you, you, you're not, it's not a market pricing mechanism unless you go out to bid. So you'll never know the answer unless you were to, to put that up. And I think that's a difficult position to be in. And I, you know, while I may be able to advise you that is legally acceptable, I'm not sure it's financially responsible. And I think those are two questions that the council have to answer on its own.
One easy thing to do is to just go to bid, whether they need to or not, to solve that problem, right?
Yeah. The issue, the issue that I, one of the things that we have found out when towns have gone out on their own, one of the big problems that have generally arisen on this is, is, okay, you throw it out there, and you say, I've got 150 acres, throw back whatever you want at me. And this is what you're willing to do. We want to bring this out on a, on a very detailed basis, and basically say, okay, guys, if interconnection costs, you're, what's your assumption there? And what if that is double what you expect? What effect is that gonna have on my lease rents? Are there going to be property taxes? You could now property tax this potentially, or enter into a pot for this. There are all kinds of other things that unless you're a specialist in this area, you're not gonna know. And I've seen so many towns who've done this on their own, end up falling over halfway through the process, after spending a lot of time and effort, that has caused them, you know.
To be clear, I think we were talking about just going out to bid, in your role as consulting advisor, not, I, I mean, I don't speak for the council, but I'm very worried about the workload on our, in staff. I can't imagine attempting a project like this without somebody like you.
Right.
So we were talking specifically in durable.
Well, that was, when he was talking about the financial aspects of this, that clearly was the other side of the, the coin, and doing the RFP yourself.
He's been very patient.
My question's probably something that Jan would have to answer. I'm looking at, what is the minimal price of an acre of land in the industrial park? And then, looking at the 25 acres, or the 70 acres, it would probably take us so many years to make back some of that money, even though they are leasing the land. You know, what are we losing in the value of the property that we're selling?
That's what we've talked about.
That's the thing that I'm.
And that's another question that will take a little time to answer.
Right.
I, I will say that, if I may, I, I think this approach is a very interesting approach, and potentially, a very beneficial approach to the town, because I agree that we don't have either the capacity or the expertise to do it right. I do think the council needs to look at a question why this approach would results, lead to a different result than when the previous council declined the other offer for a large part of the industrial park. And the second question has already been raised as to whether, in fact, we need to do some due diligence on whether additional competitive processes are required just to engage these particular services. And I appreciate, by the way, the way you've presented this, I think you've been very open and honest, and.
I try to be.
Understanding of, of the town's position. What might be helpful to the town is if you typically enter into some sort of an agreement with the town, if you could provide a sample of that agreement, that might actually provide some guidance on, on that question.
Absolutely. That is no problem at all.
Thank you.
And if it, if they're not, if they're public documents, the flip side of that as well, the agreement you might have with the developer who you finally sign on with, if, if that's not confidential.
I don't have any agreements with developers. What we do is, in the RFP, we say, we will be paid by any developer, X cents per watt of development. It's across the board, you include it in your bid, anybody who responds has to put it in there, because I'm not playing favorites, I'm not doing side deals, I'm not doing anything other than, this is it, everyone's on a level playing field, and we're done.
Well, then maybe an example of one of those final agreements, if those are public, you know, might, might.
I can get you multiple copies of ones we've issued, so.
Thank you.
This is just.
I had some questions. Earlier, you said we could do all three of the different types of programs. Just for clarity, does that mean we could do multiple of one type, two separate?
That I'm gonna have to look into, and I think it's gonna depend on the plats and the lands, and we'll have to see whether you could do, you know, five feed and tariff deals, instead of doing one bigger deal. I mean, this is, there's, there's work that needs to be put into this, just to develop this, and get, obviously, the town council's input, and town administrators, and everyone's input on this. Because I don't want to put anything out in an RFP that isn't exactly what you want, so that when you get something back, you, you know what you're, there's no questions. This is it.
So is the, the 25 acres, is that a typical fit? Is that the maximum?
25 acres is the maximum you can do, based upon five acres per megawatt in a five-megawatt AC project.
So anything above 25 would have to be a separate?
Would have to be viewed as a separate project under that pro, program, or we'd have to move into a separate program, one of the two.
Next question was the, the overall life cycle of the whole project. So you got us up to construction. So the town has paid nothing, you've done all the services, you're getting paid from the developer, it's up and running, we're getting some revenue from it for 20 to 25 years.
Right.
Nothing else from the town, other than that. And then after 20, 25 years, the, the panels are kaput, and the developer takes them away, and you go, okay, that's good. Or it continues in this place.
Or they've, or which, which is more likely, that they re-energize the facility, put new panels on it, and continue down the road. That's the other possibility. Normally, when you see these 20 or 25-year lease op, you'll see additional options of five or 10 years, on lease options on top of it. That is because panels typically have a 25-year warranty, but a 35-year life, people like to keep it in place. But there are issues as far as things go. For example, one of the things that we always discuss with our munis is, do you want a surety bond for removal of the system at the end of the term? Okay? Normally, they're not gonna remove the concrete stanchions that these things are, they're put into the ground, but they can cut everything off at the ground level, and return it that way. So return conditions are something that we always discuss with folks about what they want, and whether they want some surety to make sure it gets done. All of these things you put into an RFP if you're, that you would like to see.
Is there a problem, is there a problem in getting rid of panels that are now 20, 25 years old?
It depends on what kind of panels you're using, okay? The, the typical PV crystalline panels have, you have no problem getting rid of them. There are certain types of thin film that are based upon what's called cadmium telluride, and catel is also used in batteries. Those types of panels clearly have stuff in it that you need to dispose of properly, because it's hazardous waste. But most panels do not have that.
So is it hard to dispose of that? Oh, most of them don't have that?
Most of them do not have those in it, and they're easy to dispose. And if they're, and if it was at the end of 20 or 25 years, and they expect another 10 years of life, there's a secondary market that is being developed, has been developed, where a lot of these panels at the end of our life cycle are going off to Africa or other places for off-grid application to be used, so they can generate electricity there.
I just asked, do any towns prohibit or, or not consider solicitations with the cadmium panels? Cadmium something else?
I would never, I would never recommend, and I would never allow, a project I am involved in to be built with cadmium telluride panels. Okay? Even though they're a little bit cheaper, I don't think they've got the life cycle and/or use that I would, I would recommend anybody use. I just wouldn't do it.
One other point, I was, wasn't clear on, at what point in this process, and by what mechanism, is your fee, your percentage assessed? I mean, when do you figure out what that is? Is that part of what the developers say, well, here's our proposal, and you get this percentage, or how does that work?
It's, it's basically a, a cents per watt fee. Solar facilities have a size, so if it's a five-megawatt DC solar, that's basically 5 million watts of solar. We calculate it on a per-watt basis, our fee, and that is subject to negotiation with you, and that's about it. Developers don't have any role in determining that.
Okay. And just to further on that, the, the tables of estimates you gave us for each of the types, is that estimated revenue net of that fee, or gross?
It's, our fee is paid when the facility goes into commercial operation, so that the revenue you see there is the revenue you would get.
Okay, so this is after any fees?
After any fees, correct.
Okay, that's it, thank you.
By the way, these numbers, we didn't pull out of the air either. We, we talked to a couple of developers, and to get baseline estimates on what they thought.
All right, well, I should probably.
I'm sorry, I'm well past 20 minutes.
No, 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 you were great. It was our question, so that's just fine, no, that just went perfectly. And I appreciate you taking the time to come out here and inform us a little bit. Obviously, we're very busy with a lot of projects, and I'm always looking out for our town administrators, so this is one of these where, you know, whether it's a dog park, I mean, a lot relies on the sponsor to, to drive it. But I think, can we ask for some kind of MO or a high confidence opinion on the first question, which is whether we need to go to bid? And it may be, it may be the decision of the council to do it anyway, even if we don't have to, or if it's a unclear question. But that sounds to me like that would be pretty soon to one of the next action steps. And I also think we need to get our hands on the two prior, I don't know how much of that was in closed session.
That, that could be very helpful to me, if you have, if had people take a look at this, and what they determined.
We have, but I have to think when.
The solar markets have changed dramatically. I mean, we've had reductions of 75% of prices of the cost of these things over the last 10 years. So things are changing constantly. Your programs in Rhode Island change all the time. I think one of the things I need to do is get copies of our, our typical contract and an RFP into the hands of, of the town administrator and town solicitor, and.
Yeah, and I think it would.
And that can be, they can take a look at it, and then, if you can pull more information about what you've done here, that would be really helpful to me.
We also need a completed. We also need a completed solar ordinance, don't we, before we would even go, before we even go forward with any of this?
Sometimes that becomes a motivating factor. That could be excellent contemporaneous.
Right, well, but we have to keep that in mind. There's no solar ordinance right now.
How many, how many proposals have you had in front of town council to build solar in Tiverton?
Two or three.
Well, it's been on private, not...
On private land.
We had a windmill one, too, which we fought to nail. That wasn't solar.
How about, have these been on commercial industrial zone lands or agricultural zone lands?
Both.
The ones that you've seen? Both?
One was agricultural.
And there were six or so that, I'm not exactly sure, something about half a dozen that were submitted in various stages while there was a live solar ordinance for a period of about six months. But we are, I think, looking to have that solar ordinance back up, running in the next few months, so I don't think it's gonna take years.
Yeah, and just to tell you, Joe just reminded me, it was when Paul McGreevy was here. It was that short period of time when Paul McGreevy was here was when we had that other company. Maybe we can find it somewhere.
We may, I know that in the second case, we didn't actually get a detailed proposal. They didn't get to that because it was basically declined before, and it was a conceptual proposal.
I can remember being in this room or some, or maybe even the auditorium.
I will try to look it up.
And somebody speaks...
And I don't know if there was any proprietary information involved.
Particularly Cooperstown, right, the baseball hall of fame? We'd like to know, can we reach out to other towns? Is that something that...
I can give you a list of people to contact, absolutely.
Yeah, that's my question. I wanted to see how it was going with them and...
Sure. That's absolutely no problem. We have a number of clients that I'm more than happy to put you in touch with.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Can you move the baseball hall of fame here?
All right.
Build it, and then we'll come.
Yeah, right.
Well, thank you. I don't know that I can commit to a specific time. I mean, I feel like maybe we should be checking in in a month or so. I don't know.
I was well aware that this is an informational session to hopefully educate you a little bit about what's going on, and that's, that's fine.
I think I probably just need a couple of weeks after we get the documentation from, from the folks to base this on.
No problem.
So you'll give us some sample contracts. We're gonna dig out what we can from prior proposals, and we're gonna do our homework on the bid process. And I think otherwise, it's still up for review and study.
Sounds good.
Great. Thank you again.
Thank you.
May I just ask one more question, just for research purposes? Where is your company located?
Stanford, Connecticut.
Okay, because it doesn't say that anywhere on the, so Stanford, Connecticut. Okay, thank you.
So I reiterate, thanks for coming up here.
No problem. Thank you.
Wonderful. Have a good night. Thank you.
Stanford, Connecticut.
All right, well, we, we had on the agenda an open public forum. Since we don't have an executive session tonight, we've had no, no one sign up, so we're gonna move right into our public hearing mode. These are advertised public hearings. The first is a request for an approval of a sound variance and special event license by Alyssa Wood Annual Arts and Artisan Festival. It will be from July 20, 2019, from 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. as always, subject to meeting all legal requirements. Here's your chance to get some free advertising.
I want you to come. Tell us all about it.
This is the 32nd Annual Arts Festival. It's held behind the Mill Pond Shops in the property back there. That's Teresa and Jim Holland's private property. They also give us the property across the street for parking. We've hired a police detail to help people cross the street over there. We have about 40 vendors. We do music, but it's not really a music festival. It's more about the art. The music is just there for like background shopping music. We have like one speaker, and we don't even have a stage, just like an artist with a guitar. But we do still need the variance for it.
Where is this property?
It's right behind the Mill Pond Shops. After you go through the lights and four corners, the shops, or like the consignment shop is there. It's in the woods behind that, in the grass.
I've been there a few times. It's a lot worth showing.
Thank you.
It's a very cool event.
Mr. President, I'll make a motion to approve the sound variance for Alyssa Wood, the Arts and Artisan Festival, to be held on July 20, 2019, from 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. at 3948, 3949, 3952, 3964, and 3980 Main Road.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to approve as requested. Would anybody from the public like to be heard on this matter? Second call? Okay, all those in favor? Thank you.
All right, thanks so much.
And then I will, don't we need to do the special event license, too? I'll do that, too. I'll make a motion to approve the special event license for Alyssa Wood, the Arts and Artisan Festival, July 20, 2019. Do you want me to read all those addresses again? How about to be held at the Mill Pond Shops in Tiverton from 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m.?
Oh, is it fair?
Can we just combine these two now? Thank you. Okay. Congratulations.
Okay, thank you. Hopefully, we'll see you guys all there. Thank you.
Okay, moving on, we have Mr. John Stein, Neck Road, requesting approval for the sound variance and a special event permit for a wedding on September 1, 2019, from 4:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m., both subject to meeting all legal requirements. Would like any, have free advertising for the wedding? Any wedding crafters, we can come down and...
It's 110.
Anyone from the public wish to be heard? Any questions or comments from Mr. Stein? Okay, any, may I have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve the sound variance for John Stein. Can, do you have to do them separately? You have to do them separately. I think you have to do them separately, right?
Sorry?
We're debating, do, we have to do these separately, right?
Yes.
Yes, see?
Sorry. We're trying to figure out a way to not do it separately, so that's...
No, but for now, you do. So I'd like to make a motion to approve the sound variance for John Stein at 425 Neck Road for a wedding to be held on September 1, 2019, from, what was, where's the time on this again? Four to...
4:00 p.m. till 11:00.
From 4:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m.
Second.
Second call. Anybody wish to be heard on these, on these matters? All those in favor?
And then I'll make a motion to approve the special event permit for Mr. John Stein at 425 Neck Road in Tiverton for a wedding to be held on September 1, 2019, from 4:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m.
Second.
Very persuasive arguments.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Good luck. Congratulations. Thank you so much.
Okay, we now move on to Tiverton Day's Fields of Fire. I keep thinking chariots of fire, like we're all gonna be running around and racing.
There's bonfire.
Ms. Lynn Larson of Kelly Levek, request approval for sound variance. This is Friday, July 26, 6:00 p.m. to 9:00 at the Pecassett School. That's at 242 Main Road for live bands and a bonfire. This is your chance for some advertising for Friday, July 26, Tiverton Day's Fields of Fire. Tell us all about it.
Hi, I'm Kelly Levek. I'm joined by Deedah Moran and Barbara Pelletier. We're all members of the Tiverton Days Planning Committee here before you tonight to ask for the sound variance for the Fields of Fire at Pecassett Fields. The one change I'd like to make is that we are not doing a bonfire. That was a beach event. We actually, last year, had businesses sponsor the little metal fire pits that you would have in your backyard, and we are using those again with the help of the Tiverton Fire Department who are manning the lighting and burning of said fire pits, wood in fire pits. We do have three bands scheduled. George Elzabek is our sound engineer and talent booker, and we're here asking for the sound variance for the bands that are playing that night. Obviously, there's no lighting on the fields. The event will be over by 9:30 at the latest because we're in darkness and need to get home so we can get to bed for the parade the next morning.
I don't think the firemen can light them because they put them out. So I don't think they're gonna be able to light them later.
We have to train them in the day, like let the fire burn.
I'll move to approve the sound variance for the Tiverton Day's Fields of Fire, Friday, July 26, from 6:00 p.m. to 9:30 p.m.
Sure.
Just in case, at the Pecassett School Fields, 242 Main Road for live bands and various fire pits.
Correct. 15 fire pits.
15 fire pits.
Second.
Does anybody from the public wish to be heard on this matter? Okay, all those in favor?
We don't have to do a sound variance for the yoga class, do we?
No. Yoga's very quiet and calm. We also are on there for the special event license, which would include Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, July 26 through 28. Friday night would be the event at Pecassett Fields, 6:00 to 9:30. Saturday morning would be the parade down Main Road, family ties to Little Bear. It steps off at 10 o'clock in the morning. Then we would be at the town library for a scavenger hunt and a ladybug class. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, oh, ladybugs was last year. Oh, I'm sorry. Ladybugs last year, monarch butterflies this year. Yes, little education and craft program that we're having for families at the library that the Arts Council graciously is sponsoring.
We will be handing out seeds so people can plant milkweed pods and attract monarch butterflies, which shall rule in Tiverton. We're on the migrant path.
They shall rule in Tiverton.
Council will be super sad.
So put on your monarch shirts.
I like the monarch mania that you just said.
So that's Saturday, and then Sunday morning, we do have yoga at Grinnell's Beach, which is at 8:00 a.m. We then walk over to Coastal Roasters for some complimentary coffee and tea, and then we head to the fire department on Main Road for an open house from 10:00 to 2:00. And that concludes our weekend for this year.
I will be missing the yoga, which is for everybody's benefit, but I'll do the free coffee.
Yeah, no, no, no. No free coffee if you don't do yoga, Mr. Coulter. You will be paying for your own coffee.
I know, it's for the best for all of us.
You can do chair yoga with Sally.
Dan has some good yoga.
All of our events are open to everyone, free and family-friendly events.
I'll move to approve the special event license for three-day, July 26 to 28, town-wide celebration at Pecassett Field, yoga at Grinnell's Beach, parade on Main Road, Tiverton Library, Tiverton Fire Department open house at station number 2, 85 Main Road, subject to meeting all legal requirements.
Second.
Does anybody from...
Doesn't matter, me or Joe.
Anybody from the public wish to be heard on this matter?
Yeah. Yes.
Oh, Nancy might have a question.
I just want to remind that the vendors are gonna need their peddler licenses.
Yes, we will be back at the next council meeting with our food vendors, which are coming on that Friday night for their peddler, one-day peddler licenses, which I believe a gentleman did do, one of them did today. I got an email. But we'll be back again next meeting.
Great. All those in favor?
Perfect, thank you very much. I did email you, all of you over the weekend, that you're all invited to join us in whatever capacity you would like. You can march with the elected officials. I'm sure Joe's marching with the basketball league. You can march with the Democratic or Republican committees in town. Mayor Fung is coming. You're welcome to march with him. Make yourselves happy, but please join us somewhere at some point. We'd love to have you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we will now...
I did basketball, I should.
We have some appointments and no resignations, though, right?
No.
Just appointments. The Tree Commission, one of our veterans, Mr. Peter Moniz, requesting a reappointment. This is a three-member board for your terms. We have two vacancies. I think we can proceed directly to a vote unless there's an objection.
No, Mr. President, I'll, I'll move to reappoint Peter Moniz to the Tree Commission for a term. Does it say on this when this term is supposed to end?
Yes, right.
Madam Clerk?
2022.
2022? There we go. To a term to expire on 4/15/2022.
Second.
Okay, and again, we have two vacancies, so after this reappointment, there will still be a vacancy available.
The Tree Commission.
I thought Mr. Fugere had an interest in trees.
Well, I thought that Tubanai wants to cut them all down, put up a solar panel.
I thought that you were gonna be on the Tree Commission. Oh, he suggested you're on the Tree Commission. I don't know. You like trees.
Well, I like, yes. I like the matured trees and matured ones.
The matured trees?
Well, it's...
Well, you know, we don't get matured trees unless we start with little ones. We need some, we need to start somewhere there, Mr. Fugere. So you said you had an interest in trees. There's an open space.
So we're just, we're not gonna cut down the matured trees, we're just gonna take the babies and...
Can we appoint somebody if they didn't apply?
No, yes.
Probably can't do that.
I was just thinking of making them.
All right, all those in favor? Thank you, Mr. Moniz. Appreciate you for many years. Service, the Recreation Commission, Dan Bosold. This is a new appointment. All right. Is Mr. Bosold here? Okay, we have two vacancies, one applicant. I think we still like a quick touch base, though, right? Is that our practice?
Well, because he's a new appointment.
Is he here?
No, he's not here, is he? He's not here, right?
Shouldn't we meet him?
Probably just say hi.
Do we do background checks on these people?
Do we wanna, Nancy, can we just reach out and ask him to swing by the next meeting or whatever?
Yeah. I'll stop at each of our houses during the week.
Move on to the planning board. Another one of our veterans, Mr. Stuart Hardy, requesting a reappointment. We have three vacancies on the planning board. This is, this would be one of the slots to July 15, 2022. We don't need an interview, but I know you're here. Is there anything you'd like to, thank you for your work, anything you want to tell us?
No.
No, I'm gonna nominate him before he changes his mind.
Second, second.
Yeah. So, yeah, so I'll make a motion to reappoint Stuart Hardy to the Tiverton Planning Board for a three-year term to expire July 15, 2020.
Second.
All those in favor? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Stu.
Can't say enough, but thank you for all these boards and commissions. There's several of them. They put in a lot of time. The planning board is one of them. We are gonna switch and talk about Grinnell's Beach. We have all kinds of things to talk about. We're off to a nice start, and we're gonna make it, I guess, even better. Talk a little bit about trash and lifeguards, parking. Mr. Jeff Rosso is here to talk a little bit with a suggestion, and Counselor Cook has some things to say about lifeguard. Beach passes town liabilities. We also have this in our weekly report from our administrator. I don't know where to begin. Since Mr. Rosso is here, why don't we, do you wanna start with you?
May I? Please.
Okay, maybe not.[1712.12]
Mr. Jeff Rosso is here to talk a little bit with a suggestion, and Councilor Cook has some things to say about lifeguards. Beach passes, town liabilities. We also have this in our weekly report from our administrator. I don't know where to begin. Since Mr. Rosso is here, why don't we, do you wanna start with you?
May I? May I, please?
Okay, maybe not. I'll let the administrator kick us off then.
I did put it in my weekly report, but I would like to actually repeat some of the points that I was trying to make. The first point being that, in my opinion, some of the issues that have been raised or concerns that have been raised have potentially been overstated, perhaps significantly so, and that it's not necessarily helpful to go down that path. In my view, based on what I have learned from people who are at the beaches on a regular basis every day, basically, things are going generally quite well. And also, I am very pleased with how the staff is working out, starting with the new coordinator, Sarah Dwyer, but also the lifeguards that have been hired and the parking attendants in particular. In this year, we have found that we have people who are willing to pitch in with more than what they, in previous years, considered to be a limited job description. For example, they're helping out with cleaning up the beaches, and I think that's great progress. The first issue that was raised with me, at least, was the lifeguards, and as you probably know, we now, we have four lifeguards, and they are, in fact, all certified. And that there has been any question whatsoever that we don't have certified lifeguards. So I just wanna try to dispel that notion once and for all. That's not to say that we always have perfect coverage. I happen to know from today that on Wednesday, we are short one lifeguard, so we could usually, we could certainly use more lifeguards. But even so, we do have pretty good coverage, basically being able to cover the beaches when our opening hours are. The second issue that was raised is trash, and certainly, there has been a problem with trash, as I've been told now many times. We probably had a much worse problem in the past, where... And where there was a whole lot of trash at both beaches, including Grinnell's. Certainly, we have, once again, from time to time, trash problems, because not everybody always behaves exactly the way we would like them to. On the other hand, I'm told that the trash problem is not completely out of control at all, and with the help of staff, as well as the normal patrons who actually clean up after themselves, it's a very manageable situation at this time. I wanna add one other thing about this whole trash issue, and that is that it has been apparently raised to an outlandish extent on Facebook. And I'm frankly, on behalf of staff, appalled at what happens on Facebook when it comes to issues like this. When I say things get overstated, that is probably the worst example of it. All kinds of people feel it, feel it's necessary to weigh in on that, to say all kinds of horrible things about people who work for the town, and to say all kinds of horrible things about people out of town, to the point that we're dealing with disgusting racist and homo, no, just xenophobic comments. And I just wanna protest against that. And I have to say that if I have to put up with that kind of stuff going on, on Facebook, on our town, which gives the town a horrible reputation, I'm not really interested in doing this job. And anyone who contributes to that, I'm just pleading with them to reconsider how we use Facebook and for what purpose. Because this issue has been blown up for the purpose of serving very different agendas. And I think it's a shame, because the history of this project is that we made something out of a not-at-all, very attractive situation, to the point that we now have a very attractive and successful facility, and what we really need is support and appreciation for the people who are, have made this happen and are continuing to make this happen. I just have to say that, it's really, probably can tell from the bottom of my heart. Doesn't mean that we wanna discount, that once in a while, we have problems. We certainly have problems sometimes in the fishing areas, not only at the beaches, by the way, elsewhere as well. We're trying to deal with that. I spoke with the police department that we need to send the signal, we need to catch people when they do egregious littering and whatever, and we need to find them. We need to just make it clear that we're not going to accept it. But that doesn't mean that, you know, every day, that the beach is buried in trash. It's just simply not the case. So I would like to just bring it back to its actual proportions. The other thing that has happened, which I think is very helpful at the beach, is that we now have community safety officers helping out, which makes a tremendous difference. We have talked to the police department that we get the officers out there on a regular basis, and not just sitting in the car, but getting out of the car and interacting with the public. Because ultimately, the only way you really deal with trash is to educate people that you're a guest. You should behave like a guest. This is your beach, treat it as such. And I think the police can be helpful with that as well, as can be the staff, as can every one of us, as I said at the opening of the beach. This is ultimately an issue of stewardship, and we all have a responsibility to keep it a beautiful place. Lastly, parking has been raised. Parking is an issue, especially in the vicinity of Grinnell's Beach. The main problem at Grinnell's Beach appears to be that people don't wanna pay for parking, so they park where it's not legal to park. That is a problem. The only thing we can do about that is to enforce parking bans, including where no parking is posted on adjacent streets where resident parking is in place. And so the police are trying to do that. I will say, at any given time, our police department has three people on the road in town. Good luck taking care of everything, but they're trying, and they are aware that enforcement is necessary so that things don't get out of control. We had some problems at Fogland Beach, but they were not, but those are just the real exceptional days in the year, like July 4th, when we even didn't have enough parking capacity at Fogland, which is amazing. But even so, I think it got managed pretty well. Again, I'm not saying that there is no issue that we need to deal with, there is an issue. We are dealing with it. Longer term, I think the whole question of how we manage beach facilities during the summer is a larger discussion that needs to happen at some point in terms of how our recreation program is structured and staffed. But for the time being, I think we're doing the best we can, and we certainly are listening to people who are asking questions or are raising concerns. We're trying to deal with them, but I was just asked that we not overstate them.
Okay. Thank you for that report. So I guess I'll mix up the order here. Let's start with the easiest things first. So it sounds like we're in great shape on lifeguards. That's been something we've struggled. I'm hearing nothing but good things. Do you wanna add anything further on lifeguards? Is everybody, everybody happy on the lifeguard situation?
No, I only brought it up because I had someone ask, and having a lifeguard in my family when they worked here, they had to show all their credentials, so I just, I just says, let's just get it out there. They are all checked. They're all SERF qualified, first aid, used in the AED, they're qualified. Otherwise, we would be in a bad place for liability. So I just wanna put that to rest, and that's why I, it was from someone that lives here, and I was like, let's just put it out there, let's have a discussion about it. They are all qualified, they have to go for their certifications, or they're not hired. So I just really don't wanna talk about that again, because that puts everyone at risk. The other thing was, as far as lifeguards go, is there doesn't seem to be an answer, and I'm going to the solicitor, or maybe, maybe the interlocal trust could help us out, but is the parking fee bound with the lifeguards? If there's not a lifeguard there, can we collect? This is the issue that keeps coming up.
And we do have, for the time being, something that I think we just have to accept as somewhat definitive answer, which is coming from DEM, that yes, there is a provision, according to DEM, in place under state law, that we cannot charge for parking if there is no lifeguard on duty. I have my own questions about that, and I have it from actually someone higher up at DEM, whether, that really only applies to when you charge for access to the beach and not to parking. But the person in charge of the beach program at DEM left no doubt that he believes that that is what state law says. I'm gonna still check that out, I'm gonna ask where exactly are you, what exactly are you referring to, whether it's a statute or a regulation that DEM adopted under, but for the time being, I think it's prudent for us to just stick by that guidance that we have received, which means, you know, it's understandable. Certainly, there's good intent behind this provision, which is to try and prevent and reduce tragic events at beaches and make sure that we have lifeguards. But again, as we said before, easier said than done. Even when we don't have lifeguards, we have parking issues. And not being able to control or manage that is arguably a burden on the town. So that's some, that is a point, I think, that needs to be made with the state as well as to how we do. But for the time being, I don't think we have the luxury of ignoring or dismissing the guidance that we have been given by the...
So for the time being, if there's no lifeguard, no fee for parking?
Correct. My question to the solicitor...
What they've been collecting?
Is, if there is no lifeguard, do we open the gate at Grinnell's, or do we leave it locked? Because if we open the gate and leave it open, are we liable if someone does?
Not if you have the signs up, and the signs are on.
Okay.
And I'm seeing this lifeguard thing as a good thing, that we found, or if they're certified, that's a long-term challenge, might be a challenge again, probably will be, but...
It's probably gonna be a challenge the last two weeks of August, 'cause some of the kids go back to college, so we'll probably be down to one lifeguard, maybe two. But that's usually, yeah, I'll be a lifeguard. I know how to use the AED.
So I have a question on that, too, and it goes to Joe's point, 'cause that is what happens mid-August, when the kids start going back to school. And the question is, you know, you've got the no lifeguard signs posted, but if you have someone on the beach who's a volunteer, not a lifeguard, not in a lifeguard suit, not sitting at the lifeguard chair, but, you know, it's somewhat risky to open the bathhouse if you have no one on the property there who can be a little responsible or supervise, or, you know, make sure there's no vandalism, or even that, like, you know, one of the toilets is leaking all over the floor. So during that time period, if we had volunteers who are not lifeguards, just simply, we're not charging at the gate, but somebody who's willing to take a shift down there so that we can open the doors to the bathhouse, and there's somebody there, is there any liability then? Would the trust say, that's okay, you can do that, as long as you're, no lifeguards posted, signs are there?
No, I mean, I'm more than willing to ask someone at the trust for their opinion about that, but would you...
You know, I think with all of these questions, it has the same, you know, unsatisfying answer. Is there more liability? Well, is some lawyer gonna add that to their claim if somebody's injured? Oh, they had somebody there the day before, we had an expectation that there was gonna be a lifeguard there. I sent my kids to the beach because I knew that there was a lifeguard every day for the last 10 weeks, and then that day, you didn't have a lifeguard, and my kid walked down there and was injured, right? Or I saw somebody down there who I knew worked for the town, so I assumed that they were a lifeguard, and my kid got injured, right? That will be added to any claim, and just like any good personal injury lawyer, they don't leave out any of those components. So it's really hard for me to answer whether you're actually increasing liability.
But the trust could, I mean, but since the trust ensures us, they could give us an answer and say, yes, we'd be fine, we understand, you know, the liability to the premises and the, you know, the, so we're, you know, we'd be okay with that.
And I think Jan's right, that that's the kind of thing that they are comfortable either giving advice or saying we don't have advice on, right? If you say, here is our policy, we will put a lock on the gate or not put a lock on the gate when we have a lifeguard or not, they probably have enough experience to be able to give the town an opinion as to whether they view that as an added risk. I mean, it's always a little bit of added risk, there's always some risk there. You can't say unequivocally that you're not taking more of a risk. But at the same time, you know, beaches are there because people wanna use them, and they understand that there is some risk to going to the beach. I think, you know, that's not a perfect defense, certainly, but it's something you have to take into account.
To eliminate, to eliminate the issue of the bathrooms being open, would it be feasible to put a portage on there so that that would be accessible at all times, even at night? Seems like a lot of problems are at night when the, you know, there's fish in or people, you know, sitting down there at night. Would it be feasible to put a portage on there from, say, June until September?
I'll, Jan answered that, I think, but I would be more concerned about that risk than the other options.
Well, they do it at the Pecassett School, they do it for the parks program. I think they have a portage on there, or Little League puts it there for the whole summer, and I'm sure that would be a liability, no? If I'm not mistaken, this issue has been raised and vetted quite a bit in the planning for the beach and, you know, all this discussion. I don't consider myself expert enough to say which is the better way to go. Somehow, it was decided that porta potties are not the way to go at the beach. I don't know, and there are problems with porta potties, too. Oh, yeah, I know there are, but I mean, we've seen those, too.
Of course, having more, more people in whatever volunteer capacity also mitigates against risk.
Yeah.
As well, so it's an empirical question, really, right?
Well, I'm just saying, if you, if you could get an answer to that question for when we don't have lifeguards, if that would be allowable, we might be able to round up enough volunteers that would take shifts or turns to be down there, so we could keep the bathhouses open without worrying about, you know, damage or leaking, or, you know, an overflowing toilet or something like that.
The only caution I have is, we ask, especially an attorney, at an organization like the trusts, you're asking for the most conservative opinion possible.
Well, you think of it as...
Depends how you ask the question, right? If you leave them the option of giving you the worst possible scenario, then they will, right? But if you try, we can try to, Jan and I can work together to try to tighten how we ask that question, to make sure that they're...
And they're understanding, 'cause we're not the only town that has this dilemma. It's all over, so...
So how late, how late are the, I think it's 10 o'clock that they consider the beach to be closed? Is it 10:00 PM?
Yeah, 10:00 PM, they go down, lock the gate.
You think that's kinda late, that you got people coming in and out of there? I don't, who determined 10 o'clock? Like, some people have dawn to dusk, or what...
It was dusk, but I think the police department couldn't get down there till 10 o'clock, or somebody determined 10:00 PM is a reasonable time.
I can actually answer that. That was, that was determined by the Recreation Commission, is, at least for this year, for a trial, in part, because the abutment is lit, you know, that has lights that stay on it, the shade cell structure's lit, there's security lighting down there, and the thought was, since, you know, those are some of the most beautiful sunsets anywhere, and that the sun often, you know, doesn't set till almost 9:00 o'clock in the summertime, that the idea that people might wanna go and sit and watch the sunset, you know, or walk the abutment would be a really nice thing, and that, you know, not trying to shoo everybody out of there the moment the sun went down to give them a little bit of a chance, or there was also, you know, some discussion about, well, you know, maybe you have dinner at the Red Dory, and you decide you wanna go for a walk on the abutment after dinner, or, you know, some, on a nice summer night, sometimes people are out walking at 9:15 or 9:20. So the Recreation Commission got the opportunity to make that decision. I think the plan was, as far as I can tell, we'll try it this year, if it doesn't work, if it's a problem, we'll rethink it, but that 10 o'clock was a, you know, reasonable amount of time. It's also, by the way, consistent with the existing ordinance, which says that recreation areas in Tiverton, if they're lighted, are normally open to 10:00 PM, so it's the same as their other recreation areas that close at 10:00.
That was also one of the, one of the, someone that was asking that, and I think we've covered most of the, most of it.
You got on there, beach passes, Donna, something about beach passes.
If you're gonna get a coverage opinion of some fashion, we'll follow up on our making sure we're covering volunteers.
Well, the beach passes went along with if there was a lifeguard or not. You can't get a beach pass, apparently, you're not supposed to be collecting fees if there's no lifeguard. Did I hear that right? Well, that, that was part of it. Okay, thank you.
All right, so let's, on parking, and then we're gonna get to the trash, anything more to say on parking other than just enforcement? And there is some private property down there, too, that I haven't heard directly from the landlords, but I imagine that could become an issue, but, and I don't think, is there anything else to say about parking at this time?
Are you talking about Fogland or Grinnell's?
I'm just at Grinnell's here. I don't know if we have Fogland on the agenda, we can add it for discussion, for sure.
When you were talking about parking, I was wondering if you were talking about both?
Yeah, that's a little different fogging.
So what are the parking rules in the area around Grinnell's and those residential areas?
So parking is prohibited along Main Street, and it's, on almost a regular basis, I would say, when it's very busy or very busy beat day, at least violate it. We're trying to enforce against that. Generally speaking, there is no parking in that area along Main Road. On the side streets, it has been recognized, I believe, in the past, that parking can become, parking...
parking by non-residents can become a burden for the residents and therefore most of the side streets near the beach have been posted for resident parking only.
And how is that? They get stickers for that?
Yeah.
And is that just in people who live in that neighborhood or is that anybody in town can get the sticker that demarks them as a resident?
No, 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 you have to live there.
In that neighborhood?
Yeah.
Every sign down there says, "No parking anytime except for one at the corner of Lawton Avenue, the northwest, northeast corner of Lawton Avenue and Main Road," it says, "One hour parking." Everywhere else in that area says, "No parking anytime." I don't know if that sign shouldn't be there because some people say right away, "Oh, it says parking one hour." But everywhere else says, "No parking anytime." So I'll have the chief check that out.
Chief will check that out, I'm sure.
Got that, chief? All right. It's the only one I see.
Do people have to pay for the stickers to park in that area?
I've never heard of them paying.
Residents get them for free, right?
My daughter had a paper sticker years ago, maybe that changed.
But that, there's the beach sticker, this is the Stonebridge area sticker.
The residence sticker.
It's a residence sticker, right? Residence sticker.
Yeah, I live in the area, you go, you go to the police station, they give it to you.
Although.
Yeah, but it's not a beach parking, it's a residence sticker that they get to put on their windshield, not a beach parking, right?
The residence sticker, right?
No. Not for Stonebridge. Anything else on parking?
The, the only thing I'd like to say on parking and, and I know that the chief's working on this, but the Grinnell's lot that has only filled up so far, one day where it filled up and that was it, it was full for the day. You know, most of the time there's turnover. I think the only thing that I've seen that I find frustrating are the people, there are spaces in the lot, they don't want to pay to park, so they'll pull up and then, you know, the passengers and everybody gets out with all their stuff and then they go off and park someplace illegally. And that is a little frustrating because, you know, they're using the services and they're using the beach and there are certainly spaces available in the lot, it's just a matter of choosing not to pay for it. And, and I do think at some point when we can try and make an example of that, it would be good. I do know it's tough because a lot of them park on Main Road sort of in the vicinity of Coastal Roasters, not in the, usually in the part where it's the one-hour Coastal Roasters parking, but close by. And then that makes it hard because you don't want to ticket somebody who's there parked to get a coffee at Coastal Roasters. I mean, we don't want to, you know, but at the same time, that does get a little messy. The other question, just while we're asking interesting legal questions that came up about the resident parking sticker is there, although it doesn't say this in the, in the ordinance, there's some theory that only residents who live on those streets can get parking stickers. But I'm not really sure, first of all, it doesn't say that in the ordinance, and second of all, I'm not really sure how, if the streets belong to everybody in the town, to all the taxpayers, only people who live on those streets are entitled to a resident parking sticker. I mean, if you think of other communities that give out resident parking stickers like Newport, you get a resident parking sticker, but it's good anywhere that there's resident parking. It's not, so I've had a couple of people ask about that, whether or not any resident, because we're all the same taxpayers and, and we all own the streets sort of collectively, is entitled to a resident parking sticker regardless of where the resident parking area is.
Good point.
I've, I've never looked at that, but I'm happy to.
I can definitely tell you the big cities have area-by-area permitting, so I'm sure it's allowable, but whether that's necessary for the small town is, is another thing. Mr. Bennetts lives in the area, right? Anything else?
Yes, and I'm one of the few residents who actually has resident parking stickers with the address on each of our cars. And the, the ordinance does call for you being a resident of that area, but strangely, most people that live in that area don't have stickers on their cars. So if it's very strictly enforced, I think it could run into a problem because the residents that live in that area that don't have a sticker will end up having to make trips to the police station to explain why they don't have a sticker. But the, the ordinance, I was involved in getting it passed because at one time, many years ago, if you left the house on a weekend, you could not park anywhere near your house, you'd have to park two or three blocks away. This was like 25 years ago, before the ordinance was put into effect.
Okay.
So it does, does help a lot, particularly the people that have more cars than driveway.
All right, so parking plan is enforcement, see how it goes, and we will go from there. And everybody good on parking? Okay. Anything to say about fishing before we tackle trash? Fishing, how are we feeling about fishing?
It's been great.
The only concern about fishing is that it might be a heightened litter issue potentially. We're going to keep an eye on that? Is that fair?
I don't think there's an issue with fishing per se, to the contrary, I think fishing is encouraged and protected by state policy and state laws and I won't go any further, but it's that some fishermen are less than careful with what they do with, say, the remains of the fish that they got, things like that. Some users, whether they're fishermen or not, can be less than careful with what they leave behind in the areas that they, they visit. So it's, it's really more generally a problem closer to, I believe, littering than the activity of fishing itself.
I was, I was at Fogland with grandchildren and actually some of the fishermen who were down at the end of Fogland, this nice lady, I mean, we were all, two of the kids were barefoot, and she said, "Oh, please have them put shoes on because people are really careless about hooks." And I had never thought about that. And sure enough, when we were walking down at the end there, it was low tide, we found four hooks just lying on the beach. That's not good.
Okay, that's the segue to trash. Mr. Rosso, the first shall be last, but last, have a seat, make tell us, take your time.
I've grown up, I've been sitting so long.
We had a chat, this is, everything, all good about community involvement and taking a good thing and making it a little bit better? Tell us what you, what's on your mind.
Well, first, I just would publicly like to thank you and, and Patricia for coming down to the villages and, you know, kind of bringing the Town Council Roadshow to us a little bit and giving us information. You know, you, you made a lot of friends there and really, both of you, I know you're both busy, so thank you very much. It was a wonderful evening and we really appreciated you doing that. I'm the guy, you know, Mr. Ritzma was referring to, and again, you were nice enough to call me earlier and we had a nice conversation and you shared your thoughts. And I, I agreed with a lot of it and it certainly, you know, wasn't my intent to have it end up the way that it was described. So again, you know, I'm, I'm really sorry. A little history behind this, on June, I forgot, which day was the day that you had the grant? Was it the 27th of June? That morning, coincidentally, I went down to Grinnell's Beach and I walk there every morning. I walk from the villages, go to Coastal Roasters and then just kind of go to the beach. And I was kind of disgusted over time, just, you know, with trash that I saw on the beach. And again, this was probably before a lot of things were put into effect by the town. But that particular morning, coincidentally, I didn't even know about the ceremony later, I just said, "The heck with it, I'm just going to do something about it," and went to Coastal Roasters, got a bag and some gloves and picked up the trash. Kind of liked it and thought, "Well, all right, I'd be, you know, willing to do this," you know, to, you know, "I'm there anyway and my age it probably is helpful to bend a little bit." So I started doing it, but I did post and I, and again, I, I don't know, Jan, if you read actually what I posted or, you know, just got a lot of the flack from people that, you know, read some of the responses. If there's anything that I posted that anybody found to be offensive or anything toward the town that said people weren't doing their jobs or that the town wasn't going full-force trying to better the situation, because I really did try to go out of my way to make sure people knew, "Look, this isn't, you know, this isn't a town's not doing a job thing, it's just an idea, you know, that in spite of everybody's best efforts, there's trash on the beach." And like you said, again, I didn't mean for it to be overstated. Initially, you know, I had taken some photographs and I posted them. I've also said that over the time, it's gotten a lot better, at least at Grinnell's. Now, I don't know, Denise, if you, you had said something about Fogland earlier and, you know, when people responded to me, you know, it, some of the polite response, a lot of them said, "Well, what about Fogland or Nanaquid Bridge?" I even spoke to Andrew who owns the bait shop on Riverside Drive where a lot of the fishermen buy their bait, and I said to him, you know, "If the town did something and wanted to put a sign in your store or handouts or whatever, you know, would you be willing to participate?" And he said, "Yeah," I said, "but good luck." He said, "I put some signs out and I have the same problem that, that you do." I did a lot of research because what I did, and, and those of you that saw my post, I had asked people, "Do you have any suggestions of how we could do better?" I, somebody had told me, you know, "Why didn't you go to the Recreation Council? I probably should have, it's just my own naivety." I think you said, Patricia, when you were doing Grinnell's Beach, sometimes, you know, it's, it's better not to know, you know, what obstacles you have ahead if you just do it. So I just figured, "All right, well, I'd go to the Town Council and I, you know, talk to Jan and maybe bring some suggestions from maybe people that lived around the area and had some ideas." So, you know, they did, but again, as you were referring to, you know, there were people that really got out of control and don't let anybody use our beaches and, you know, got to be racist and stuff, and most of those I didn't even bother responding. Some of the people that did, I thought, you know, the responses were, were adequate, but it wasn't my intent to do that. My real intent was more an exposure. Look, no matter what the town does and no matter, you know, what we do as a community, trash is always going to wash up on the beach, there's always going to be things that fall through the cracks. You know, I think through awareness and, you know, I'm not the only one picking up the beach. I mean, I've seen other people there and usually something like this, I would remain anonymous. But I just figured with such a beautiful new project and the fact that there was litter there, that maybe it was a way to just get people aware, maybe if there's a few other people that are thinking to themselves, you know, "Maybe I'll pick up a little bit of the trash, maybe I'll, you know, be more aware of picking up after myself." And again, on the towns part, you know, I was thrilled that you had already hired the extra police and, and Patricia, you told me about, you know, friends of Grinnell Beach and, you know, the, I guess there's a Tiverton Littering Committee in the part. So there was a lot of things, I'm new here, I didn't really know about, but again, through that Facebook thing, it came to light. And my feeling, I love this town, I mean, you know, I've only been here a couple of years, but it's the kind of place people just dream about living and for those of us that are lucky enough to live here, it's a wonderful place. And to live in a community that's a postcard is amazing. I did speak to the attendants on the beach and, and again, I hope nobody thought that I was trying to say, "Well, you're not doing your job" or whatever, ever. The only reason I did was for instance, let me give you just a quick for instance, and I know, you know, nobody wants to stay late at this meeting. Somebody had suggested maybe charging an extra $5 for bags is one, you know, is, is one suggestion. The people that were paying anyway, charge them $5, when they return the bag, they get their $5 back, which on the surface seems, you know, hey, you know, they're going to get their money back, it's not going to cost them much more to be at the beach and it's a reminder, pick up your trash. But after talking to the attendants and, you know, Jan, you also said that it's not the greatest of ideas, you know, the devil's in the details, but I did want to do my research to get an idea before I came here, you know, what might work and what might not. But I guess, and again, it wasn't my intent and I'm really deeply sorry if people felt that I was going beyond what I should have done, that, you know, "Well, hey, you're not picking up the trash." The other interesting thing too is that, and, and again, I just want to be helpful. I, in the morning, I was told that the attendants do pick up the trash when they get there in the morning. And I had spoken with the park and Sarah, who said, "Yeah, you know, they should be doing that." But I spoke to the attendants and said, "It's not always possible to do that. When there's one attendant, they don't have the time to leave the gate unattended to go pick trash up." The only reason I really wanted to know that was number one, I didn't want to duplicate somebody's job. If they were going to pick up the trash every day when they got there before people went to the beach, great, you know, it's one less thing I had to do. But, you know, obviously, just because of the resources, it's not because anybody's lazy or the town's not doing anything, it's not happening every day. So I'm going to, you know, when I can, I'm going to continue to do that and that way, you know, if they get there, they do have the time, there's less trash to pick up. But that was really my only intent. The thing that I really feel badly about is, you know, like you had said, Jan, I've got a tremendous amount of respect for you and every time I've ever brought something to your attention, you've been very attentive and things have gotten done. And when you called me, I was saying, "Well, gee, you know, if you interpreted it like this, you know, other people might have." And, you know, even though I was going to be a little shorter with this, I kind of feel that I just want people to understand that my intention was all positive. I, you know, I'll take responsibility for people that, you know, had negative responses for opening up the door to their own, you know, hatred or racism or, you know, anti, "Don't come to my town," you know, because, yeah, I originally posted it. But I really do hope that anybody that does read my portion really kind of gets the message that I'm very proud of what the town's doing, I honestly am. And I know even before I did any of this, there were things, you know, because Patricia, you told me, that were in the works. But I really think as, as citizens and as individuals, there's always going to be things falling through the cracks. And the more of us, like there was a fellow Dana on the beach the other day that, you know, cleans up all over the place periodically, I posted that, you know, we need more Danas and we need more people that, you know, will just kind of, "All right, well, look, I don't mind picking up a few extra things or I'll bring a bag to the beach." And, you know, Fogland especially, you know, Grinnell, there's not a huge problem. I mean, you know, a little bit, but, you know, again, it's gotten much better, but there's trash receptacles there. You know, I don't see any at Fogland, I know there was at one time, you know, I don't know the logistics of it all and it's a much harder beach to patrol because it's much longer. So there are issues, but it's a beautiful beach. And my only thing in posting this was maybe just making people a little more aware and, you know, trying to get some ideas from people that live around the areas that what might work. And again, nothing's the gospel, you know, the Town Council, you know, Jan through your different departments and Rick has been great, you know, and it, with, with things. I mean, the other day when I went to, it was Friday where I went to Grinnell and I went to Fogland and I'm thinking to myself, "Well, gee, you know, Fogland doesn't look so bad." And then I found out because DPW had cleaned Fogland that day and so, and they cleaned Grinnell. So they're on top of it, but it's really up to us as citizens to help maintain our beaches. So again, really, my sincere deep apology, you know, Jan, I really do appreciate your phone call because, again, if you interpreted things that way, other people did, and it certainly wasn't my intent. So, you know, if even this talk inspires one person that may be in this room or listening, you know, watching the town meeting to pick up a little more trash, I guess it's worth it. And, you know, I'll do what I can, but I really appreciate the opportunity. So, and, you know, again, some of the suggestions was the bags and some, you know, maybe well-posted signs with pictures or in different languages, but, you know, again, which languages and where do you put them? And, you know, somebody raised the point, "You don't want just this beach full of signs." And maybe, you know, even at Grinnell's, maybe in the fishing area, you know, leaving some kind of trash can or one of your lifeguards, you know, made a suggestion, maybe some sort of receptacle by the lifeguard stand, that she said she'd be willing at the end of the day to pull out and put in the regular trash. But again, those are just suggestions, you know, the truth is in, you know, the, like I said, the devil's in the details and, you know, that's for everybody to work out. But I just wanted to present the forum. So again, I'm sorry, I'm a little long-winded, I am kind of passionate about this and, you know, really, I apologize to anybody that was offended by either mine or anybody else's post on that Facebook page. Thank you.
I think, I think one of the very good attributes of our town administrator is he's, he's a fierce advocate for, for his team and the staff, so we like that quality about him, but that should never deter anybody from coming forward with suggestions because we, we, we all can chip in. So, so thank you.
I think.
Mr. President, I just wanted to suggest that I, I'm hope, I would encourage people not to get the impression that in order to raise suggestions, even complaints, you need to be an expert on social media management or take responsibility for everything any crazy person might say on social media. I, I think we want to encourage people to speak up and say things and be, be controlled in their own right. And I, I just, I don't want anybody to feel like they'll become a target because somebody else doesn't know how to behave online or because somebody might misinterpret something that's said. People ought to speak up and be, feel free to do that, especially if they're doing so in order to be helpful. in order to be helpful. So I just want to encourage us all to keep that in mind.
And may I add one other thing? I also don't want anyone to get the impression that we don't appreciate people who want to help and volunteers who are helping. What I would ask is that they coordinate with the appropriate staff. And in this case, that is Sarah. And she can tell people how they can be most helpful and how they can be, you know, assigned certain things or whatever. That's certainly something we would appreciate and she's there to help people with that.
We also have that cleanup day, right? I'm trying to remember, it's usually in May?
April. April 28th, the last...
The litter committee runs that.
Yeah.
So obviously that's just one.
Keep Tiverton clean week.
In terms of just awareness issue, that might be...
That should be all year long.
Yeah. Adopt a spot kind of thing.
I'm just curious, is there, is there somewhere a list of the appropriate contact person for any given issue? I mean, I know it'd be helpful, somebody posted something on Facebook, hey, what are we doing about this? It'd be helpful to be able to say, oh, you go to Sarah for that. Or if it's somewhere else in town, just is there somewhere, some reference anywhere or is that just...
Well, on the website, for example, Sarah is designated the recreation coordinator. So I think most people will understand that she's the one to contact if that's what they're wondering. If they want to call here and find out who do I talk to, we'll tell them as well. I just think that she's really, you know, that's why we have people in certain positions and with certain responsibilities. People should just address themselves, if at all possible, to them.
I'm just trying to think of ways to get people more easily and directly to the appropriate contact person, whether it's that issue or some other issue.
Use their minds.
And Sarah is doing an incredible job this year for somebody who just got thrown into the, she's doing an incredible job.
It also raises a good point that you don't have to, you don't have to join a board or commission to make a contribution in the town.
That's right. Can we volunteer?
So don't overlook possibly doing that either. Okay. Good stuff. Anything else?
Well, I would like to say something about the trash at Grinnell's and I have a little bit of an opposite perspective than some folks. And I think the rest of my committee feels the same way, which is frankly, we've been stupefied and amazed at how clean that beach is staying on a relative basis. It is a public place, it's never going to be perfect. And believe me, I'm not discouraging volunteers like Jeff from going down and cleaning up. I mean, anybody who wants to help is more than welcome. And I think Jeff's point is good that it is our community and we don't have to be a member of a committee to pitch in and help. And, you know, certainly picking up trash everywhere and anywhere is really good. But having read a lot of the stuff on Facebook until I literally got to the point where I just couldn't read it anymore, I think on the plus side, it is really awesome that people are so excited about the beach and feel ownership of it and are proud of it. That's the good part. The bad part right now is I feel like we're a little bit in that, what I call new car syndrome, where it's brand new and it doesn't have a scratch yet and nobody spilled a coffee in the backseat. So we might be a little bit hyper reactive about things when you have something that's brand new. But it's been unbelievable how clean the beach is staying. And that is in large part to Sarah and her staff and they really are, you know, the gate attendants get out there and police the beach, you know, before it opens. Most mornings, there might be the occasional day when they're running behind, but they're doing a great job. And during the day, when there are two of them, you know, they'll pick things up. And, you know, the DPW maintenance staff, Phil and Manny are doing an awesome job too. I mean, they're really, really watching things. And then, you know, we've got some volunteers who are helping. But I really also do give credit to the people who are using the beach. I mean, we've been down there a lot and we're working a lot. And during the day, people are using the trash bins and they're using the recycling bins and you see people picking things up. And there was some little boy the other day who picked up stuff and, you know, brought it up and put it to the trash. I mean, people are really trying very hard to take good care of it and it definitely shows, you know, you will have the occasional person in any group who maybe is not that respectful and leaves a little bit of a mess. I went down there 4th of July night at 8:30 and both the beaches were packed all day long for my own self to see what it was like at 8:30 at night after that beach that had been sold out and packed all day. I picked up six things. That's all I picked up. And I walked the whole place, six things, one soda can, one Dunkin' Donuts lid, two Nutri-Grain kind of bar, wrapery things, a napkin and a bottle cap. I mean, I, and nobody cleaned it up. That was just the people there. So I really do think that people are trying hard and it shows. And we are appreciative of the people like Jeff who are trying to help and pitch in and if we all do that, it'll stay looking nice.
If you want to let Mr. Bennet go and then why don't you get the last words since you're the sponsor, is that okay?
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
I keep saying, talk and then I say, oh, you can't.
I have a suggestion to control littering. I read in one of the papers, and I'm hoping it's true, that there are several closed-circuit television cameras monitored by the police.
That's true.
If that's true, that's great. I think it would be an immense benefit to have a few signs that said that at the beach.
There is, they say that.
They're not prominent enough. Because I haven't seen them.
I think I would notice them.
Yeah, I would think I would notice them. Because over the years, and I've been in Tiverton for 40 years, on not that many occasions, I have seen gutted fish and fish heads at Grinnell's and on the pier. And to me, a gutted fish is trash times 10 or times 20. It's disgusting and it's dirty. You know, an empty paper cup is one thing, but something like that is another. So I think it would be good if there were signs visible and prominent, particularly to fishermen, that would kind of give them the idea. And maybe on the bottom of the sign, fine, $500, the maximum fine that's allowed for littering. I think that, because all it takes is one litterer to overwhelm the good of several hundred good people that aren't littering. And I hate to see that because the town has done a great job with both the pier and the beach. And it's something to really be seen and appreciated by everybody. Thank you.
Yeah. I just think, you know, the biggest problem is probably from late, I mean, just from what I've witnessed, because again, for most of this week, I was kind of, I thought we were on to this like, you know, role, which we were until this morning. And then, you know, somebody had sort of trashed the fishing area a little bit. And it was, it was a little messy this morning when I got down there and, you know, you kind of expect it. But I really think the biggest problem is that it, you know, during the day, I'm sure keep, people keep it very clean. And I think, you know, that first early morning cleanup is probably the best because most of the people are, you know, using it during the day. But you see like at night, people probably party down there a little bit. I know people fish down there all night long. And, you know, that's probably where most of the stuff accumulates. So if you, you know, again, by that early morning trash pickup and I think with the security, because I thought about this and with different suggestions, you know, again, it's very hard catching people throwing trash, you know, just leaving it. You know, I don't expect, you know, with the few resources we have in the police department, that somebody's going to sit all night, you know, looking at a camera. So again, you know, I just think you have to use other means. I think signs just as reminders are good. And, you know, just the fact that they have security cameras, both for trash and also for drugs, is a good thing. But yeah, that section maybe from 10 o'clock at night, maybe till, you know, well, 10 o'clock at night till when people leave from fishing in the morning is probably your biggest problem. Thanks.
Every day it sounds like.
I am. The only day I wasn't here in the last couple of weeks was, I think it was Saturday. Thanks.
So I guess one small follow-up item is we're going to get some clarity on at least the insurance treatment of our volunteer corps. And who knows, maybe this will turn into the Tiverton Volunteer Corps or the Community Service Officers or whatever it may be.
Seven councils if we all take a day, we got it covered.
That may be part of it too. Good stuff. Thanks for bringing that. All right. We have it all tonight. We have casinos, we've got weddings. So back to the casino. Public safety protocol.
If I may.
And...
Ah, look who's here. You can see, he must have been high. No.
Yeah, if I may, I, with apology, I will say that we do not have a report for you today and I can explain why that is. What I heard the last time is that you did not necessarily want to be buried in paper. You don't want to get a whole lot of raw data, you wanted evaluation. And I believe you wanted it from town staff in terms of what our experience has been over the last several months with the public safety protocol and the program and the details and what have you. So I asked for that information, I explained that it had to be an evaluation. And, you know, initially, basically was, well, we have all the monthly reports. And then the monthly boards became an attachments. Well, the monthly reports are about a lot more than casinos. So I said, no, that's not the way. And I personally have an aversion to being buried in paper and I've had a lot of experience with it. So I don't want to subject you to that if I can help it. I will give credit to Mark to, that because he actually tried to put a narrative together. It was pretty short. I thought it was very focused on, you know, what is of interest to Twin River. And I thought we needed more from our police and fire department in terms of what really has been our experience, in terms of what kind of calls do we get, a little bit better understanding for the council, you know, what's happening there? What are we responding to? And to what extent is there any concern or reason to be concerned that maybe this is taking more resources than we had anticipated when the council negotiated a community host agreement? I didn't get those narratives. I wanted to make sure that the narrative that Mark had put together was completely supported by the police chief in particular and hopefully the fire chief as well. I don't have that yet. And so, and by the way, at the police department, someone did an amazing job crunching a whole bunch of numbers and doing all kinds of fantastic graphs. But to me, that's not what you were asking for. So the good news is that we have the data for the whole period. Okay? So we have all that information. What I think you're looking for is an accurate and concise summary and the evaluation of, you know, to the extent there are any concerns, what are they? And otherwise a confirmation of, you know, this is working the way it's supposed to be working. I could tell you that there was one glitch, I haven't heard anything negative, frankly. The one glitch that has been experienced is with communications and it's a technical issue, not an issue of, you know, people not communicating correctly with one another. It's a technical issue. So my request is that we actually postpone this to the next meeting. I think you will be able to do it in one meeting slash hearing and it would still be well in time so that the ordinance can proceed on schedule.
Mr. President, I just say for the record, Attorney Mark Russo is here on behalf of the casino. The administrator mentioned Mark, I just want to make sure the tape recorder gets it.
Okay. So if any more time, that's fine. I just want to make sure, is there anybody from the public that came here to be heard on this agenda item? Is there, make sure you have a chance to speak. Otherwise, I think we're going to continue this matter until potentially July 2nd. And again, we're just somewhere, I think, can't remember if it's an ordinance or a contract, there's a report that needs to be completed. And we, and as you described it, is exactly in my memory, we're looking for sort of management commentary. Although I definitely, I think you're wearing the bullseye, but I think it should include feedback and input from...
Oh, yeah, yeah. We're coordinating pretty closely, that's not the issue.
Did anybody wish to be heard on this? Otherwise, this will come back up in two weeks. Anything you want to add since you're here? Okay, we are in our last segment here, general announcements. Back to you, Jan. Anything else? Oh, we have the sidewalks and paving. Come on, state of Rhode Island, pave our roads. Can we get that meeting?
So the last time this was included in your consent agenda and it was discussed that I would draft a letter for the council to go to Ry dot. Logistically, it might even be simpler if I get to sign it, but obviously you wanted to take a look at whether this letter conveys your sentiments on the issue. And what I've tried to do is also combine the issue of the sidewalks along Main Road with other issues relating to state roads in town because it has been the subject of frequent and repeated complaints. And I think it's time that we sit down with the DOT people, but perhaps also the elected officials who have been engaged on this issue from time to time. So with respect to the sidewalks on Main Road, just before this meeting, Mr. Bennet stopped by and said he had some additional comments and suggestions and I will try to incorporate those. I agree with almost all of them, not entirely, but I will make some additional refinements to the letter, in particular the reference to not only the state transportation plan, but the preceding request by the town to include this project in the state transportation plan that will be included and the other points as well. I'm not sure about one aspect that he raised, which is the section north of where Riverside Drive hits Main Road, because that's not a state road going up. And so I think it needs to be treated differently. But what I will do is suggest that it become part of the discussion and see to what extent the town can work, you know, with DOT to address that as well. But the project always was originally from Riverside Drive to Nantiquet Road. And I think we need to focus on that and get it back in the tip. And it may be in the tip, but not until the out year. So the focus is going to be on trying to get it moved up and dealt with. And even if the department can just start by clarifying whether are supposed to be sidewalks so we have a better idea of that. And hopefully this letter accomplishes that. So if you're okay with it, I would make some minor adjustments to it, incorporating Mr. Bennet's comments and then get it out to DOT as soon as possible.
I think the letter looks great. And again, thank you to Mr. Bennet, just like Mr. Russo for coming forward with some suggestions here. Can I make one quick? Sure. Something new?
Quick? Yes, quick. You don't seem to agree with my idea...
The beach is open until 10, okay? We can still make it if we...
You don't seem to agree with my idea of extending it from Riverside Drive to Central Avenue.
No, I don't disagree with that at all. It's just that's not DOT's responsibility. You're right, however, in making the connection to the bike path that at some point may come in.
Right.
And the DOT infrastructure in that regard. And I will certainly point that out.
But that part of Main Road is the DOT's responsibility.
Main Road is.
Yeah, Main Road.
Riverside Drive is not.
No, I'm just talking about the stretch of Main Road sidewalk that goes from Riverside Drive to Central Avenue. That's a stretch of sidewalk that is kind of old, kind of rough shape. It, I was actually down there today, I didn't believe it was 30, 36 inches wide. It was 36 inches wide, I was wrong. Doesn't look it. However, there's a 10-inch telephone pole in the middle of it. And if you have a wheelchair or a baby carriage, you cannot get around that telephone pole, you go out into the middle of the road. So it makes it clearly not ADA compliant on the Main Road sidewalk. And I can explain why the original tip of 2011 did not include that stretch. It didn't include that stretch because, I remember in 2011, because I worked on that tip proposal with Mr. Goncelo, Jim Goncelo. It wasn't included because Central Avenue was not a walkable or bike road. It wasn't made a bike path on, along both sides of Central Avenue and a new ADA sidewalk on Central Avenue until 2012, a year later, when the new Secana Bridge bike path opened. So there was no reason for anybody to go walk that way because it didn't go anywhere. However, a year later... However, a year later, it is a place to go, either walking or biking. So, it would be a, a crippling effect to be walking from Nanacoquod, past beautiful Grinnell's Beach, looking at that, and then you can't get to the Secana Bridge bike path either with, you know, a baby carriage or a wheelchair, because you're blocked. That's, that's, I just wanted to explain, that is part of the Main Road, and that's why it was not included originally, because there was no Secana Bridge bike path or walking path to get to.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Someday, we will bury our electricals.
Yeah, I was gonna say, if we can get the OT to bury all the electrical and phone lines, that'd be great.
It's only money.
Well, not, I mean, I mean, somebody else's money.
The important thing is that a lot of the roads in the town are under state jurisdiction. I feel like the last time in the council, we didn't even have a full list of those. I don't know if that's a wish list item, we can get a list. You get a lot of constituents to call, they're like, why is this road in terrible shape?
It's very easy to get you that list.
All right. Uh, any other announcements, Mr. Administrator?
None, thank you.
Okay, Madam Kirk? Mr. Suster?
None.
And the floor's open, anyone else?
I have a question. Could we get a litigation update soon? Because it's been seven months and we haven't had one.
Yes.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Yeah, I'd like to publicly take this time to congratulate and commend Brett Pelletier, Trish Hilton, and the Grinnell's Beach Committee for all the work they did on that beach. It was great.
We're gonna add this to the agenda every day.
I'm, I was gonna say, first of all, thank you very much, and remember, there was a lot of people who worked on this, and, and great committees and everything else. And didn't we do this last week? Were you here last week? Anyway, thank you.
I do wanna say, too, there, there are a lot of volunteer projects across the town, and we, I always get nervous about this, I mean, you know, we appreciate all of them, please keep reminding us.
There's plenty of openings.
Yes, there are plenty of opening volunteers.
Speaking of...
Okay, we have no exact session tonight, uh, so I am, uh...
May Joe start us in?
Well, I wanted to try to set up a, um, a committee, so we meet like the third Saturday of every month to go and clean up trash or debris at Grinnell's Beach. Can we, and do weeding? Is that something we can set up publicly?
So, yes, so...
People can volunteer for?
So, so, so the committee has a few odds and ends left to do, but we also do have to keep up with the weeding until those plants get big enough that they fill up their heads. And it's interesting you say that, 'cause I was about to send an email out, but I'm now encouraging people to bring their friends or their children. So, um, if there's anybody who wants to join the weeding, you know, cleanup sort of events down there, we have to put a little more mulch down, oh, and we have some, a little bit more planting to do, so anybody who wants to dig some holes, um, they should let me know, and I'll put you on the, um, volunteer email list and, and let you know. And it's not like a mandatory thing that you have to show up. We send it out and go, hey, if you're around, come, bring your garden gloves and show up and help, so, yes.
How many more plantings can you do?
We have to plant that stuff over at the Bicentennial Green.
Can we do the dog parts?
Dog parts in the works, we're in the works. It's been rough, but we're in the works.
He does this.
All right. We have a non-debatable motion adjourned on the floor. All those in favor?